Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting on Monday, January 25th. Tonight's agenda will consist of open up with our student representative Ashton McGowan. And the key points of our agenda this evening, we'll be hearing from our head nurse, Amy Grenat. We'll be hearing about our superintendent search committee, updates on the budget. And then following that, we will have a discussion for the school year calendar of 2021 to 2022, and then a budget update. Don't further ado. Ms. McGowan, are you present this evening?
Not in the meeting yet.
She's not in the meeting? Okay. We'll jump ahead to the minutes we have. I'll take them separately. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2021.
Make that motion.
Motion for the second?
Second.
Discussion. Any none, all the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Right. Directly, we do have a full board sign, five members present and in person. Second minutes from January 13th. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move the second discussion. All the fair, please say aye.
Aye.
And I will stand forward, affirmative and one abstain. Please let me know, Ms. McGowan, if she does come in. We can see if we can get her in after our next item of business. Jumping down the agenda. And is our school nurse, Amy Grenat, with us?
Yeah.
Is she ready?
Hello, how are you?
Good evening, Ms. Grenat. You have the floor.
Very good. So, thanks for having me tonight. We have some updates. We have a few, the numbers updates, and then some changes in our COVID quarantine policies. So, we have 32 total positive cases as of today. We have 25 students and seven staff members that have tested positive. Although we don't report to DESI, the remote students, but it is important to note that we also have 12 fully remote students that have tested positive. So, up until this past weekend, we've been able to say that we haven't had any in-school transmission at all. I'm a little hesitant to say that today because we just recently had a situation this weekend where we're, the timeline is a little, not as cut and dry, and the two people that had tested positive are friends outside of the school. So, as of this weekend, that might have changed a little bit. So, either way, if that is our, if that is our first in-school transmission, I think we're still doing great in terms of mitigating spread. You know, especially compared to other districts around us, I think we're doing a pretty good job at keeping the numbers down, keeping the number of, you know, transmissions obviously down, and being quick to quarantine students and staff when we feel that they are either displaying symptoms or if they've been exposed. So, we've been pretty good there. Particularly to note that other towns around us are, a lot of them are more than doubled us in numbers. So, for, for the size, you know, I'm trying to do some comparisons. And of course, the school nurses in all the districts were kind of trying to keep in communication and figure out what's working, you know, and what's going on, what are we seeing in trends? So, I'm, I'm really happy to say that we're, we're doing probably one of the best that I've talked to in terms of keeping the numbers down. So, that's great for the students and the parents and staff, so I'm really happy about that. Recently, we've just had some quarantine changes. DPH and CDC came out with some new guidance that DESI has obviously adopted and sent to us, and we had three different options. And I believe we discussed those three options at a recent meeting. And, you know, we, we went back and forth with it. So, the DPH, or DESI gave us three options. One was to keep the 14, the full 14-day quarantine. So, you're, you're back on day 15. Or, they have lowered it to 10 days, full 10 days back on day 11. And then the third option is a seven-day quarantine as long as the, the student or staff tests negative on day five or after. And if that is the case, they would return on, on day eight. So, after going back and forth with it, we, we thought, you know, the 10-day quarantine was most appropriate. And there was a couple of different reasons for that. One, the way our schedule falls, a lot of times when somebody was out for 14 days, it had to hit just right for them to really just be out 14 days. So, sometimes people, you know, I'd say, yeah, you come back on day 14, that's Monday. Well, that's not my cohort that week. So, then they'd be off another extra week. And that ended up being a long time for a lot of students. So, doing the 10 days, still there, a lot of times, very rarely are they hitting it where they're back on day 11. So, and the 10-day, and just doing the tracing since this whole thing started, and I think Kathy Schomer could echo this as well, we're not seeing, if, if at all, I, we're, very rarely are we seeing somebody become symptomatic after day 10. So, I think 10 days is, is a good amount of time. And, you know, as far as the DPH and CDC say, it's a 99% effective, you know. So, so I'm happy with that number. Even if they did fall perfectly on date, on day 11 to return, I'm still confident that they are not going to display symptoms or become symptomatic or turn positive at that point due to that last exposure. Where it changes a little bit are, actually, it doesn't really change, it stays, you know, it stays the same in terms of when it's a household contact or a household exposure, that quarantine doesn't start until the household member's isolation ends. Okay? So, if, if there's a household member that is positive and that student has to quarantine, the student's technically being exposed day after day. So, really, they have to wait until that household member is non-infectious. And that's that 10-day. So, that's when the, the quarantine begins for that student or staff. This is where we decided to adopt the seven-day quarantine. Okay? So, at the end of that positive member's isolation, on day 10, the student or staff can then start their seven-day quarantine. But that's a, that's still, they have to test on day five after that. So, technically, they're testing on day 15 after the, the first exposure. Okay? And if they are negative, they come back on day eight. That sounds very confusing, and I'm sure you'll have questions about that. I try to really break it down and give examples to students and staff, to parents, because it's a little confusing. But what it does is, instead of a student having to be out for 24 days because of a household exposure, they can come back in 18 days with a negative test. So, it's one, it's one way to guarantee that they get a test because that's really not in any of the, this guidance. You know, that, that seven-day quarantine is really the only, you know, need to get a test before you return option. So, that's, that's really the, the big change there. Um, let's see here. That is pretty much it with the quarantines, the, the difference between the, out in the community exposure versus the household exposure. So, you know, basically, it's, it's helping a household return faster, but the safest possible way. Does anybody have any questions about that? Those are really the main things.
I think we're all set at this point. Thank you, Ms. Grenat.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, is it, can we?
Oh, oh, done. Do a question.
I thought it was just about what she was talking about.
Okay.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
So, again, I'm, I'm gonna bring this up, and I know people are gonna say, here he goes again. But trying to advocate what's in the best interest of kids, right? And I, and I said publicly that I wasn't even sure if my daughters would play basketball if it was an option. So, I guess my question to you is, we prepare for the next potential sports season here, this kind of intermittent, whatever they're calling it, football, volleyball, indoor track. Is it possible to talk to some of the nurses that you have in your circle? Because I know we have Sutton, Grafton, Douglas, Webster, Dudley Charlton, Bay Path, I believe, Southbridge, all these schools that did play in the winter season. Is it possible to check with them and see how that went with them? Was there cases that were determined because of the sport? I mean, I've watched a few games online. I think they've done an amazing job following the protocols, just like we all are in school buildings, to help minimize that risk of transmission. So, if that's something through the chair, is that something that we could, I could request?
Can we do that, please?
So, I'm sorry, the request was to, to talk to other nurses about how it's going?
Yeah, to see, because we have communities all around us that have engaged in winter sports. So, I'm just curious what their data is. Are they seeing a spread of, you know, the transmission of COVID through the, through the sport?
So, I think the biggest thing, and I have been in communication, you know, and that, that does come up with, in the communication, in the conversations. And I think the biggest thing is, they're doing the best to mitigate spread, but they're quarantining teams and students quickly. So, you know, and if you have two teams that played against each other in a contact sport, good chance that they will both be in quarantine. But I, you know, I don't really, that's the only real feedback that I've gotten. I could certainly dig further. And, you know, I don't know that all the, the districts that you mentioned are playing or have played winter. But, um, yeah, because I, I don't know, I can certainly reach out and talk to some of the nurses and see how that went and, you know, get a good feel for.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because I'm still curious too, as to why they would quarantine teams if there wasn't a case. So, they, if.
No, no, no. There was a case, one case. So, when I say spread, that one case is not a spread. So, if one case caused several, that's a spread. So, upon one case being identified, then, then that's immediately quarantining both teams to, in a, in an attempt to mitigate that spread. So, yeah, if there's a positive, teams are in quarantine. But I haven't heard, I think that's just the biggest complaint. I really haven't heard anything bad, you know, or otherwise.
Ms. Grenat, I believe Mr. Tocqueville's question, what I think the committee will be looking for, were there any cases, were the transmission caused by athletics during the winter season at neighboring schools?
Yeah, I don't have that for sure, one way or the other, but I could certainly get that and let you guys know.
Okay, so, I'll field that, that request through the superintendent, to the athletic director, and local nurses. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
I could only add, at this time, since I had a conversation this morning with an area superintendent, it happens to be a friend of mine, that in her district, she quarantined three sports teams in three weeks. And that's Holliston. So, that's all I know. At this, you know, that's the only that I'm privy to. But I'm sure Kevin can find out.
Yeah, if we put in the area and the rest, yes. And particularly, I think particularly is important heading to, to the second, to, to that intermittent season. Where now we're going outside, and hopefully the weather does cooperate. Yes, it's in the teams, but they play in football. And you, and in the fall, it gets down this cold as well, too, that I think it's a little more permissible. And I'm looking forward to the Oxford High School, Oxford Public Schools rollout plan for the next season. Okay. Any other questions? Any none? Thank you again.
Thanks, Sam. Bye. Bye, thanks.
All right, next item of business, information proposals. Mr. Burr from our superintendent selection committee. We have an update for us.
A quick one, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, we have had, a few focus groups have been completed with Dr. Collins. He's met with the Chaffey and Barton staff, as well as, I believe, the central office staff. And he is due this Friday to meet with the middle school and the high school staff. He also held a focus group for parents in the community last Thursday. Unfortunately, seven folks attended. He did say, though, the, the one theme that he's seen from the groups he's had so far has been a concern about superintendent turnover. So, I think we're all on the same page with how important that is to get this done. And he expects he'll have a draft report for us from all the surveys and focus groups by mid-February. So, he'll get that out to us. He also extended an offer to meet with individual members of the school committee if you want to have a separate one-on-one talk with him. That will send you, pass on his email to you, so that you can do that.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Well, just the selection.
And we should, oh, we will have names by the end of this week they're doing for folks that would like to be a part of the selection committee. And I know, in just a brief conversation, we are still looking for community members to put their names in. So, if anyone out there is interested in serving on that committee, please let us know.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. That's it.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Ledoux, business office. I'm sorry, September, go ahead.
That's okay. Mr. Rick, just to let you know, I was reached out to during that meeting. They were having trouble getting into that, because I had a couple of people saying, I can't get into the meeting, is there anything you can do? And I think one of them.
Just for the first 10 minutes?
Oh, did she eventually get in?
Yeah.
I had two people.
A couple of people that couldn't get in just called in.
Okay. So, does that seven include those call-ins? Corey?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I can find out, but I'm sure he'd be willing to offer another two hours' time slot.
No, no, I was just, I didn't know if it was seven plus the people who ended up doing the call-ins. I was just hoping it had ten. Thank you.
Anything else? Oh. Mr. Ledoux. From FY '21 budget to actual through December.
Thank you, Chairman Coonan, members of the committee. As part of your packet, you should have received the budget tax report through December. There has not been any substantial changes since the last time we discussed what's actually going on with expenditures. However, I'll just talk about some of the current projects we have going on and just recently completed. We just finished the countertops at the elementary schools over the holiday break. That came out to roughly $27,000 for the four main bathrooms at both elementary schools. That includes the touchless faucets and, and replacing those failed countertops. We're also looking at replacing the refrigerators at Chaffey Elementary School. We're gonna do one school at a time as funds permit. We're paying for this out of revolving funds. It doesn't, it's not just a bottomless pit of, of cash. As, as these, as we, we'll do a little bit at a time, I'll put it that way. We just completed the countertops, we're gonna look at the refrigeration. If we have enough to do Barton School, then we'll cross that bridge and we'll get to it. We're also looking at the warmers as part of food service at both Barton and Middle, Middle School. Just back up a little bit, the refrigerators at just Chaffey alone, 15 grand. So, I can expect 15 grand over at the Barton School as well. And the two warmers that we're looking to replace are each five, so these, these things add up quickly. We also just completed in December the electronic door access at the middle school. Now, we've rolled it out at the high school. Now, we've just completed the middle school. This was paid for as part of capital, I believe, last year's capital funding, or was approved for this fiscal year. And the next thing on the horizon we have is contractual increases that'll be effective for the next payroll. That doesn't impact the budget, that's been budgeted for already, so. But I just want to update the committee as to some things that are in the works and some things that are in the near future. Not seeing costs like we have in previous years, particularly in substitutes, transportation, we have a few vacant positions. Electricity has been overfunded for, I've been saying that for a little while, due to the reallocation of solar credits. Sped tuitions and athletics are a little bit of an unknown right now. As of December, it looks like there's gonna be a surplus, but that could change. We'll, we'll see. The point being is, is I believe we're gonna anticipate some healthy surplus in some of our general fund monies. So, with that said, we might want to just start thinking about some utilizing these, these things and just, just some ideas that we've talked about, some technology, I wouldn't say issues, but maybe addressing some technology concerns. I know Mr. Phillips at one of our budget meetings has expressed some concerns as far as the Chromebook replacement goes. English material update, I believe that the English materials could, could use a, a refresh, if you will, so probably looking at a English curriculum. The elementary principals have expressed interest in literacy libraries, updating those. And again, these are just, just putting some ideas out there. If you're gonna have some, some surplus monies, just some things you might want to address this year. And another thing that we have not completed, it kind of took a back burner, but as the weather gets nice, we might want to revisit it, is the sign out front, the electronic sign in front of the, the high school slash middle school, or the campus, I should say. And that's really all I have.
Just a couple of points. First, the first point I'm gonna make is that you talked about the English language arts curriculum. Any curriculum adoption, please, please note into, if someone is talking about that, which we have. The first I've heard of it is that there is a review process that includes the school committee and the committee before any recommendations come forward to this committee. So, just long that we follow the process going through our subcommittees on that one. And Dr. Nash, that's September reports.
Just as a, as you know, I had indicated, I think, at the last budget meeting, that sometime in February, once we got two other figures, one of which I'll share this evening, after our meeting with the town manager and director of finance today, I'll be talking a little bit about what they're preliminarily telling us that they have available for us. And once we get our ESR two monies, that we need to come back sometime, probably the last week in February, and revisit and make some determinations. Some of the costs that Justin has talked about are one-time costs, but there are some ongoing costs with respect to personnel that we'll talk about. So, we'll put all of this, these pieces together. What we anticipate, we'll have a better handle on what we might anticipate two months down the road, that figure that we talked about in December, and then I presented to you at, at our preliminary budget meeting with that handout, the last meeting, where we talked about having some FY '21 funds left at the end of this year. And I said to you, that was a conservative amount. We'll have a better handle of that two months later. We were looking at that number in December. So, by the time we come back, it'll be two months later, and Justin will be able to give us even a better handle whether that number has increased. I doubt that it will decrease. We should know at that time our ESR two monies, and I certainly this evening will give you the news about preliminarily what the town has indicated. So, you put all those pieces together, and now those are the decisions, some of which are one-time costs, as Justin is talking about, that the committee will have to weigh in on. I'll review the policy on, on that to make sure that we follow that. What he's talking about is the K-12 adoption of instructional resources and updating wonders. And then also at the middle school level, getting resources K-7. So, that would be a process. You'd want to start early enough, and it's, so you have an appropriate selection, and you have staff members who'll be part of that. So, I have had a preliminary discussion with the principals to get, be thinking about it. But once we see what those numbers look like in February, I'll have to push them forward to make sure that we have the time to be able to follow whatever the policy says.
But we have to, we do have a standing committee.
Yeah.
And it does include parents, teachers, and community members. Mrs. Forbes.
No, I love that.
Okay. Mr. Dr. Gold.
Two quick things. And Justin, believe me, I appreciate, you know, the, the mindset of trying to be, you know, smart with the money and, you know, kind of not overspend. I guess my question, because it did come up a meeting or two ago, we really had some concerns or about the food service, kind of, I guess, industry, for lack of better words, in general.
The program.
The program. So, I guess my question is, I mean, we want to try to provide them with all the tools that they need, literally, right? To, to provide a service that is gonna help us not be in a deficit each and every year. So, I guess my question is, are there anything in addition besides the warmers and refrigerators that we're looking at? Or is the refrigerators a need that has to be done because they're just worn out? And that I would assume that the warmers are part of a kind of, probably helping support the increase of kind of delivering a improved product, I guess, for lack of, again, better words? And I know I'm rambling, so I guess, what is it, what are, what are their needs besides these two items? I'm talking from a structural need. I'm not talking from the menu piece. But what do they need in those, in those kitchens that are going to help improve some of the conversations that we've had recently?
This is to maintain status quo. This is to, to just maintain level service. Again, about a month ago, it came to our attention, there was excessive repairs done at the, on the refrigerators. When I used to check with the food service director, and she's, and she had indicated that they were about 20 years old, this equipment, and they were on their way out. So, we said, well, jeez, we should really start thinking about replacing these. Is there anything else that we need to be aware of to replace? The warmers has been a repeat item that was as part of capital. So, that is, that is not a new item. But this time, those are the only things that I'm aware of. And I'm not just going to say the refrigeration at just the elementary schools. She's indicated it's been, it's refrigeration at, at all buildings, needs to be looked Like I said, with, there's just limited funding, it's just not unlimited. I would love to just replace it all and be done with it. So, we're just gonna, just do a piece at a time. For now, the elementary schools absolutely need to be looked at, as well as the warmers. We were aware of the warmers. We are having a meeting with Mrs. Hokinson tomorrow, I believe, and we can ask the question again, is there any additional equipment? I guess to kind of speak to your point, if there's anything beyond that, I mean, she could certainly bring that to our attention, too. I'm open to.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to know, but, but again, it's, you know, part of our job is to, to advocate for need, right? And part of our job is to allocate money and be part of that process. So, to hear what you're saying is that, just in order to stay status quo, we need those items, and we're not even gonna get those items. So, we're gonna be below status quo. So, I really think we need to take a hard look at how we can get refrigerators to all the schools that need them, and the warmers. And I know it's a 15K price tag for the refrigerators, but if we're saying that they're not even gonna be status quo without a replacement, it sounds like all four buildings need them. I think we need, as a board, we need to, unless I'm misspeaking, do all, not all four buildings need the refrigerators?
That's what has, the food service director has indicated, that they all need to be.
But you have, you have given the go-ahead to purchase two, for your two elementary schools.
Correct. Well, I have issued a purchase order for Chaffey School.
For Chaffey. And then we're waiting on Barton? Or are we purchasing Barton?
Once that's complete, then I'll look at Barton. I just, I don't want to.
So, I think the point we're making, though, here, that the vice chair is making, is that potentially some of the funding that we may have left, we can anticipate to do those kinds of replacements. I know that we recently, I think yesterday or today, today, excuse me, you received a request for a warmer, because one of our warmers is gone. Those are around $5,000. And those are needed, regardless of how you deliver food. It has nothing to do with how we're delivering it this year. You know, those are what you put it in as you go through each lunches, you know, they come through, and you open, you pull out the pizza. So, we're gonna have to do that. So, I, I think the point is, well taken, that we need to look at that and see, and make some decisions on those one-time costs, potentially, do you want to invest it here?
It's, I'm sorry, for my opinion on the matter, you really should have a replacement plan. And you could really stagger the purchase so you're not hit all at once. Like the situation we have now, so.
Unfortunately, that was not the case.
Well, right. We don't, we don't have a plan, so now we gotta try to.
So, now we have to play catch-up.
Put a band-aid on something that stitches.
Correct.
If there's a way to stitch everything and then build a long-term plan out, then, you know, I think our job is to try to find, find funding to do that, with, obviously, with your kind of expertise.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's good when we talk about these things, like I said, if you're gonna have year-end money left over, these, these surplus, this is certainly an item that you could, you could knock off the list.
There certainly are instances where you, you have a sizable balance at the end of each year in the revolving account, and each year you take a portion of that and use that to reinvest as part of your kind of capital and make new purchases in equipment, stoves, you know, ovens, things like that. But we have not had a plan, so.
September, go ahead.
What is the cost of that electronic sign? I don't recall. Was it like 40,000?
The quotes that we have received, around 25 grand.
25.
And there was a donation.
We have a donation of roughly 12,000 from students towards it.
Okay. So, about half the 25, then.
Just to kind of fit the pieces together, that's why I'm a little hesitant on that one, because I, I did intend on funding that from, from this revolving fund.
Right.
As I've indicated, it's just limited funds, but obviously refrigeration and things like that would take priority. So, as the year goes on, again, we have options.
First involved, and Justin can use. For maintenance. And maintenance.
Yes, that Frec revolving could be used for building improvements or building maintenance, if you will. I would certainly classify equipment as part of a building, you know.
Just one more quick call. So on the keyless entry, the fobs, do we have, so staff can access the building at any time, or is there set? So they could, so I guess just talk to me a little bit, because I know it looks different in different districts, different buildings. So what, could you talk, does everyone has a swab so they can swab to get in the door? Is that what these are?
Certainly. So we just met with the building principal last week as to the implementation of this. As we just had the hardware installed. Yes, we have enough fobs for all staff to have a fob. It was up to the principal to see, to assign the fobs. And then that fob is, I was gonna say customizable, but the access is customizable. Like we can say, well, what doors can the staff member get in? Maybe she only wants them to come in the front and designate certain days and times that they're allowed to come in that door. It's a security.
Correct. Right, but I know some buildings allow, you know, some principals allow staff to come in on weekends and stuff.
We went with all four principals to go over this general plan and say, you know, how do we approach this? Now that we have that, and what decisions generally did we make as a district? And then what decisions do we leave up to you to determine, for example, all teachers have access between this day and this day? One of the discussions we had at the high school happened to be around what doors do teachers access? Now, this year, they access all different doors. Do we want to continue that or not? So we left that, we set the broad parameters and then let them go back in. The key is having the person, in this case, generally a clerical one, keep that constant updated list. That's the key. So we wanted to make sure that one person and one person only in your building is assigned that. You make the determinations as to who gets what, when, and what access. The athletic director with respect to the coaches and staff would convey that information at the beginning of a season to the secretary and then be responsible for collecting those fobs. So we were going through all of that. And I think we went through most aspects of it. Justin had put together an agenda. And I think we're all on the same page, but we'll see as that progresses, that's for sure.
I would just love to see photos of the finished product of the installation of the bathroom vanities and the faucets. I just want to see.
I have some on my side.
That would be awesome. We can send those out to you. They look very nice.
And thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
See, our next.
I am.
Dr. Nash.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, you have a school calendar draft for the '21-'22 school year. If this is going to be a normal year, which we all hope, then this tends to represent the traditional or typical calendar that you are probably familiar with. There really are no surprises. As you know, teachers are in 184 days. We have the two days in August at the beginning of the year for staff. And then the other two days are represented in green in the professional development days, both in January and October that extend weekends. This has been reviewed by the association and they have provided some feedback. Most of this is pretty traditional, the half-day in November before Thanksgiving, the same half-day before the Christmas break, February vacation, a regular full February vacation. I know that a few years back, that was a partial vacation, I believe. And the end of the school year without any snow days. And next year, there will be quote "snow days" because this was the only year for the ability to do remote, would be 6/15. So I can entertain any questions that you might have with respect to the calendar.
Dr. Nash, I know, it's been my request in the past, and it was never added to the official calendar, but we got the date, but I think it should be on the official calendar. It's a senior's last day of school.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Because that is a count that should be approved by a school committee?
Yeah. And there is, you know, the law with respect to how soon seniors can also be dismissed prior to the end of the regular school year.
Correct. Yes, we have graduation on there.
Right.
But it'd be up to.
Senior's last day.
To approve the senior's last day as well.
Sure. Yeah.
And then, I guess, the other discussion item, and I'll take it up with the committee, is if you look at the start of school, being where the first students come in on the Wednesday before Labor Day, it's a three-day work week. I think it could merit some discussion if we did want to start school after Labor Day, where I know a lot of us. I know I personally do get a lot of requests for school to start after Labor Day, especially if we're starting a little bit later. And I know it makes it a little tight at the end, but I think it's something that the school committee would merit any discussion on that. Those are my discussion points, and I'll open up to the committee for any other points. Mr. Knack, go ahead.
I know this, you know, from obviously being in the district, I know this has been a discussion or a talking point or a concern for parents for lots of years. I just don't know if this is the time to have a deeper discussion about it, seeing we are gonna be transitioning to a new bid for buses. But I know, has it been discussed, and I don't even know if it's logistic or not, but maybe having really four tiers of kind of busing. So you have your high school and middle school schedules stay the same. And then you look at Barton and you start them a little bit earlier, end them a little bit earlier. And then you have Chafee maybe go out five minutes later than they are there. So you have those staggered kind of coming to school and going. So now you don't have those elementary kids on bus routes for half-hours to hours. I just, it's something like, I was just roughing it out. Barton would get switched to 8:35 to 2:45, and Chafee would go 9:10 to 3:15. It gives you like that half-hour afternoon window that appears to be high school, middle school consistent. You know, that half-hour maybe. I don't know. It's just, I don't know if it's something that is now the time to really explore this. We've talked about it when I was in the district about trying to figure that out. Is now the time maybe to take a hard look at that? And I'm just throwing it out there.
So there's a couple of items of discussion. All right. Does anybody want to tackle any of those items? Actually, we have two items that have come up, the start times, which is part of the school calendar. And the second one of both starting before or after Labor Day. Then we'll entertain a discussion on those. Mrs. Griffin, go ahead.
I was thinking in regards to start times, I mean, we can always poll parents, but as we know, we don't really, we have no crystal ball. We don't know what's gonna happen in the fall. We can make all these beautiful plans and find out that, you know, we need to have PD training or something else happen in the beginning of the school year again. So, but it would be, I'd like to kind of, we've done it in the past. I'd like to get feedback from the community, see what they feel, feedback from the teachers. And then we'll have kind of a better pulse. Maybe people have a totally different outlook about starting school earlier, you know, based on all the things that they've gone through. Or maybe they don't. Maybe they feel the same way and stronger, so who knows?
Okay, what I'd like to do, I think there's valid points, and we're looking for reactions. And obviously, the school calendar, I would like to get this done by somewhere in February. I know we try and get it early because of vacations. I don't know what people are going towards vacations or anything like that. But I think this really necessitates, on both topics, is to hold an open forum. Is to open it up and have discussion. A public forum, a public forum, be kind of like a public hearing. But however, with the hearing officers, there's no actual hearing. But it would be a public forum for input and discussion on this. And how does our February 8th agenda look? I believe the 8th. How long, February 8th?
It looks pretty clear right now.
Pretty clear.
There are two or three items, but nothing major.
Can we open with that at 6:00? 6:05, actually, we'll do our report, and then we'll go right to that at 6:05, please.
Would you like us to put together a quick survey for parents and/or staff so that you can have that?
Yes, please.
We can send that out. Okay. We'll do that.
Actually.
Just for clarification, please, as I'm thinking about starting after Labor Day. So our first day would be then on the 7th. So our last day being June 15th with no snow days. If we push that off the three days and have five snow days, that puts our last day at June 27th. Is that correct? Am I correct in what I'm saying?
The 15th is.
Fifteenth is a Wednesday.
Right, plus five snow days would bring us to the 22nd. If we start three days later, we push out 23rd, 24th, 27th would technically be our last day.
Well, three days would be the 21st.
Last day of school would put you at the 21st without snow.
Without snow days. So I'm saying.
But it would put you to the 28th with five snow days when you build in your calendar.
Right. Thank you. That's all I needed. I just wanted to be sure.
And that is pretty close. You have to invite July on.
We can do, you know, just as fast, quick, and easy, quick and dirty as we will, survey to see what our staff, all of our staff, what their preference would be.
Staff and the parents as well.
Yeah, we can send it out.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Justin, is there any way of finding out what the cost ramifications are of adding a tier of buses? Were you talking about, were you talking about that? Yeah, right. Do we already know that?
I think we called it.
We have opened the bid. I want to make a recommendation at the next meeting as to the bid award. I did include in the language of the bid that we reserve the right to modify tiers as the committee would desire. Just in case the committee decided they wanted to change it up, they would have that ability to at least. I think we would still have to have a discussion with the contractor, obviously, to see what the cost ramifications would be. I would start with the bid award, and then maybe we can talk about that.
So if I could just follow up, Mr. Chair. So I think we'll open, present to you the bid. And because Justin put that language in, it would provide the committee with the opportunity to ask us to go back to the successful bidder and have that discussion and ask them to provide the cost based on that. You know, I remember our discussion before. Certainly, I don't disagree that I think it makes, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have our elementary students on the bus for that length of time that some of them are on. And unfortunately, it's because of the three tiers.
I just think, again, we pretty much have that time from whatever time they start, 6:30 a.m. to when they, that morning run till they're done at Chafee. You're really not adding anything in addition, other than you're just building in another tier. I see back, you know, if I have a day off or something and this district's in, I mean, there's buses that are sitting for a half-hour, 45 minutes in between the middle school run and the elementary runs. So it's just they're sitting, waiting. To me, we really much have, we have them from the start till they drop off at Chafee. And there's really nothing changing in that Chafee window, other than maybe five minutes. And, you know, I think it's very doable, and I really appreciate that we have that flexibility in the contract, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
One other point, I think I need to go into the OEA contract that I believe start and end times may be in the contract. So that would be something that we would have to bargain, any change in that, just more as FYI. I'll have to check it and see.
Please. Okay. We can all that, thank you for the points. We'll move forward, that's on hold to February 8th. And February fiscal year '22 budget update, please.
Sure. So today, actually, the town manager, the director of finance, Justin and I had a discussion about the FY22 budget, specifically with the hopes that the town manager and director of finance would be able to provide us with more definitive information as to what figure that they're looking at. I'm really pleased to tell you that we believe with the figure that they have given, or at least are projecting for the schools, that we will be able to close that budget gap and be able to fund our budget at level services. They're looking at providing us with $640,000. Now, I know.
The additional.
640.
Yeah.
Right. You heard that correct. Okay. But let me just kind of give you, so that's not incorrect. That number is made up of the fact that, as the director of finance indicated, a couple of things. First of all, some new growth. Obviously, two and a half has a cap, but a lot of it was as a result of the town reorganizing this year and the cut of about a million dollars, which is really one-time money that can be redistributed, either through reorganizations of positions, elimination of positions, reorganization of contracts, as the director of finance indicated. So it was, I think, extremely significant for us to have that understanding that it looks like that our budget gap, which was around 699 when we came to you in December, will be closed by that approximately within 50,000. So that's very good news. But I also would point out, too, that when you look back over the years and you look back at FY20, your actual budget then was 18,002,8 and some change. Your request in FY21 was 18,578. Now, remember, we came in this year and cut the budget by 500,000 right at the beginning of the year and only received back 100,000. So you have to look at this really as catch-up. Catching up, making up for what we didn't get. In essence, you received $138,000 increase from FY20 to FY21. So if you divide this up over two years, I think it's more, makes more sense. But I'm thrilled. I mean, and so that presents a very different approach once we see what will be happening with ESR funds. And of course, as Justin begins to look more deeply, now that another two months have gone by, at what we might have left and projecting at the end of FY21. So it's a good position to be in. So that's, any questions, I'll try to answer them.
But what will we have in project, which, on that note, the concerns for next year, is the lapses in education that have been addressed. And that's one of the things I know we've attempted that in the budget, but with our special education students, but also mainstream students.
So one of the ways, one of the things that I'll be sending out to the building principals this week is to really talk about some of their ideas for spending our ESR two monies with respect to personnel in particular, and how they would see using the personnel to close the learning gap. Whether that personnel is a support staff person or a professional person, and what that looks like, whether or not it's a summer program that you're running, summer one, summer two, meaning the next two summers, or whether it's a full-year program that would be a single year or two years. So I'm putting together kind of a document that I'm gonna ask them to complete, and we'll be having some of those serious discussions starting next week. This is looking at the ESR two money, which, again, we don't know exactly what that number's gonna be. Certainly, you can look at what funds you may have left that in prepaying at the end of this year, prepaying next year, will release some funds in next year's budget. But we're trying to look at at least sustaining those positions for the next, you know, two years. And particularly if they're positions that are meant to close the gap, because some of the positions may be one-year or two-year positions, and then you don't need them. There are others, however, that you do need, like the reading specialist. I don't think those are throwaway positions or positions I think there have always been warranted. So we're trying to kind of begin to put the plan together now that we have some number from the town, at least. We're waiting for the number from the state. Justin will project even with more definitiveness, you know, where we might be at the end of this year. And all of those are what we'll have to bring forward to you with the recommendations, some of which you already have, but certainly it will have to be enhanced based on all of this good news. Good news. So it's, we're in a, it's a good position to be in, even though it may be short-term in one sense. It's a good position to be in. Many districts are still struggling, so.
Dr. Nash, have anything else for us?
I do. Update on MSBA, talking about good news. It's not here, but I'd like to update you on our meeting on Thursday with MSBA. So as I think you know, but I'm not sure that the community knows, the Oxford Middle School was moved forward into the core program. There were 161 SOIs that were submitted this year. Ninety of those were for the accelerated program. That accelerated program is specific to things like roof, doors, windows, HVAC systems. We were one of the core programs. There were 71 submissions for core programs. And out of that, that was reduced to 30. Of the 30, 15 were holdovers from last year and 15 were new. So in essence, we were one of 30, but we were one of 15 new at Oxford Middle School. The next step, so we had this meeting. It included Justin and I, the director of finance, the town manager. of finance, the town manager, the building principal, the middle school building principal, our facilities director, and Steve Pagnini, who also is DPW. And we were available for about a 90-minute meeting with a cadre of MSBA officials, asking the questions about the impact that the physical plant has on student learning, the financial readiness for a town regarding any type of project that might come forward, a lot of questions around the systems. Some of the information that I thought was interesting, that I was unaware of, was the fact that any kind of abatement that has to be done, as you know, the, we had a green repair project in 2012 that addressed the middle school. It was supposed to address the VCT, the tile flooring. It is my understanding, in trying to put the pieces together, that when they replaced the windows, the caulking in the windows had asbestos, had materials in it that were used back in the time period that it was built, in the 60s, for metal windows. And it needed to be abated, needed to be removed. And that was extremely expensive, above and beyond what they had anticipated. And thus, the floors never got addressed, because I was trying to figure out why the floors were not addressed, because they were part of that initial scope of the green repair. So they were never addressed. And when Justin wrote the SOI, the SOI that was sent in last year included floors primarily and boilers. It did not really address the educational programming piece, because no matter how you spin this, this is a 1968, traditional, old high school that was now retrofitted to some degree physically to fit the needs of 10 to 13-year-olds. And it, no matter what you do to that building, it just doesn't, it doesn't match the way, you know, middle, middle school students learn. And I think they recognized that in our discussions. We talked about lab space. We talked about the industrial arts area and, you know, how that could be used differently. So we talked about spaces. We talked about hallway lighting and all of that. And they asked a lot of questions. They had people representing design team, I'm sure, that they hire in just to get some background information. The next step in the process is that we should hear back from them. I think it was somewhere between, around April, Justin?
They may want to do a building walk through.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Or virtually.
There will be-
Sometimes working until February month.
Right. There will be a building walkthrough either on a Friday when school is not in session, in person, or it'll be virtual. We'll arrange that and send that to them. And then after that, they will move on and they will make some decisions on how to move forward with the project. Now, what happens is this. If you get invited, you get invited back to become part of what they call their eligibility period, which is not that you're going to get a project, but you have 270 days to do a variety of things. One, you have to form your school building committee within the first 60 days. Two, you have to do this, fill out this enrollment data, because they're looking at projections for what your numbers may look like. You have to do the design and agreement. And then you have to come back with the potential vote for funding, even though you don't know what you're going to get. You have no idea, you know, whether you're going to get a reno of your building or a new building. Now, in the course of this discussion, what was brought up was the fact that MSBA does not pay for abatement. So even if you were just doing floors in your building and it was part of a renovation project, you, the community would be responsible for abatement. It was something I did not know. And I don't know if Justin had, had ever heard that. So that is something that if the abatement was six or 700,000, and I think that was the number that Justin had received a while ago or a few years back.
Just three years ago.
Three years ago, about 600,000. That number could be higher. So that would be a figure. But you would eventually, once you, you do that, once you meet those deadlines, those benchmark dates, there were like six components in the 270 days, then you move forward with OPM and design, and then you go out and you get invited into the feasibility study. And if you get invited into feasibility study, it's really the vote that you need to have to provide funding for a feasibility study. So the questions to the town manager were, you know, basically the readiness of the town to support this and with whatever the project might be. And she certainly said, you know, we'll be prepared to do that. So it's, it's great, but I can tell you that it's another component that whoever would be sitting here could potentially have to think about. It's a serious component, because in this case, it is not about a building that people probably look at and say, we need a new building. But it could very well be that that's the only opportunity you might be offered in funding to do any kinds of improvements, because we don't get to decide that. MSBA comes in and makes that determination whether or not they would renovate that building, whether or not they would recommend building a new building. The other piece of that, which is very interesting, this is the time similar to, I think, Mr. Canocchioli talking about, you know, busing and tiers, to the time to, to at least begin to think about the configuration of that school. And that actually should have been happening sooner than this, because when you're going out for this, this is what you're doing. You're selling it as part of your, not just the physical deficiencies of the building, but how it doesn't mean educational program, because this is what we're doing, and this is the school, and these are the grades. So that's something to kind of think about, that probably needs to be further discussed as to whether or not, in addition, that we need to start looking at our schools and whether or not restructuring and reconfiguration of grades is something. You don't want to build a building that down the road, you say, why did we build it for those grades? We really didn't want that. Or whatever you're going to get, renovate a building, let's say. So, yeah. So that's kind of my quick update. I can answer any questions you might have. Obviously, the project would be a dead exclusion, you know, for the town. And that was a question that was asked. Are there any other projects in the wind for the town? And the town manager did talk about the potential for, excuse me, down the road for some funding for roads, because that seemed to be one of the reasons why, as she explained, the DPW's building plan wasn't addressed. They want, people wanted the community and the citizens want the roads addressed first, so potentially they're going to come back. That was the only thing she mentioned as a potential large-ticket item. That's about it.
So the question, so, so when I, when I went there as the assistant principal transferred there, they were finishing up the third phase of the, that kind of renovation plan that you, that you're referring to. So the, the floor piece and the boiler piece is, is obviously the need. Was there any discussion, because, you know, to me, structurally, the building is in, in pretty good shape, I think, structurally. I mean, cosmetically, it obviously needs work, the floors and, and other things, to, to your point, Dr. Nash, to get it more educationally appropriate for that, for that middle-ish age. Was there any discussion about the cooling system? Because I know it's all, it was all ducked, it was all ready to roll with, with a cooling system. They just ran out of money to, to kind of cool that whole building. And, you know, that second floor gets extremely hot when you get a hot September, October, January, uh, excuse me, June, January, yeah, we wish, right, day. So was there any talk about building that into this project, potentially?
MSBA does not pay for air conditioning. They pay for it if your administrative offices are in a building, but they do not pay, it would be something that would have to be paid for by the town as an addition.
Right.
So that was not submitted as part of the SOI. Justin's SOI submitted to MSBA primarily covered the boilers, one of which we replaced, a partial boiler, remember, was really a half boiler in 2020. The other two were 2007, eight. So looking at those, and then the flooring. But when they talk with you, they talk about it in a much larger scope. And that was my question. Would they just limit to our, what we had put in the SOI? Would they get into a, the larger discussion? And they tended to do that. You certainly can, if the project were to be a renovation or a new building, you can ask to address it if it's a, obviously, renovation. You can ask the architect to, whoever you get, to come in and see what that cost would be, and then obviously go to the town and know that you'd have to foot that cost.
If I may.
Yeah.
Additionally included bathrooms as well.
Yes. Yeah, sure.
There's some ADA concerns, because the doors are a little smaller. Missing some ramps in the back. There's not really, yeah, there's ADA accommodations that-
There are a number of ADA accommodations. When I was looking through the entire box that the former dicton A had given Justin, MSBA and other materials, one of the, the things I found, and it appears that in October of 2014, when the project was about to begin, someone had brought up the issue of ADA compliance and accessibility. And there's a laundry list, starting with bathrooms, but also looking at things like science labs and making accessibility, sign accessibility, interior, exterior, all those things, that they had put there, asking the architect, the firm, to come in and bring back a cost. Again, I think it was a matter of just, they did not have, the project was a $5.7 million, I think, project funded 57% by MSBA. I think their, their final request from the town was 7.9 million, but it did not get funded at that. It got funded at the 5.7, and the town received a little over 3.0 million, 3.3 million. It didn't get closed out to 2019. Somehow, it was left hanging out there. Some of the documents I have or I found were the final closeout letters to the town officials on that. So there was, there were some things that I think just exploded in the project, and for whatever reason, they chose not to go back at that time to the town to say, you know, while we're doing this project, look, you know, let's get some extra money. And they, you know, they just had to do what they could do, given the funds.
Thank you. Mrs. Griffin, you have a question?
I was just going to bring up the ADA concerns. And I don't know, I just, I'm very, very grateful, Justin, for all the hard work that you did, and you too, Dr. Nash. I know you did a lot of homework and investigating and digging up documents and, so I'm, I'm grateful for that. You mentioned that timeline, once MSBA comes back and if they do give us marching orders of 270 days, and all the steps that we have to do as a committee. Now, I would like to be super proactive and, you know, I'd rather do work up front, if possible, and start the timeline now and do all these little things that we have to do behind the scenes. And if it comes to fruition, that we're so blessed, we're prepared and we don't have to stress out and try to play catch-up later. But I'd like to try to do as much as we could up front, if, if that's, you know, permissible.
Probably is not.
Okay.
Paul, there's a, when you submit, for example, the first one is to select your school building committee members. There's a sign-off, there's a date. So you can't do that until you get awarded, you know, until you get invited into the eligibility piece, period, if you will. As they indicated, any project generally has about a five to seven-year window from start to finish. That means the up to, up to 270 days. The biggest piece of this is the selling of a project, whatever that is, to your town. You can get all the other pieces done. It's really, those are logistical and paper and all of that. It is the presenting and selling of whatever it is that you're going to do. Now, there's a time period, of course, that all has to be discussed and determined. And then, once you get that, it's, it's going out and getting people to buy into it, and then, of course, the, the approval of the funding that you would need. Now, one of the discussions with the town manager, when she talked about the potential of us being invited into the next stage and going after this into the, related to feasibility funding, was whether or not, they asked this specifically, would the town need to go and borrow or do whatever it needed to do for the feasibility funding or study? And she indicated that depending on the amount, potentially, the town might be able to not do that. So, you know, remember, think in terms, too, of where we might be at the end of this year. So there are lots of scenarios with our budget that could present things in a very positive light if we were to move forward. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
One last question.
Go ahead.
So we know reconfiguration. Depending on what the news comes back, I mean, it might make the best sense for us to consider to rebuild that school. Not that we, you know, we'd love to save it based on how good the bones are, but we know when we walk through the school, that everything is kind of dilapidated as far as the floors and different things, but the outside structure is certainly strong. Should we be making a, a committee to sit down and talk again about restructuring the district? I mean, it's, we haven't done-
I don't want to mislead you and say that they can't renovate that building and really do a, a wonderful job at making it more of a, you know, color-wise and lighting and classroom accessibility, a middle school, you know, model. I've seen phenomenal, you know, old buildings, having seen them and said, this could never happen, and yet they do. So it can be. It's a matter of cost, you know, value. How much is it going to cost us to renovate as to rebuild? That's really what it comes down to for them. And how many projects do we have in the wind right now that we can afford? You know, it's really that money and how it all fits for them, as well as, obviously, looking at, you know, you know, what the, what the desire is to some degree of, of the community, the financial support.
Remember, it's, excuse me, there is a two-phase approach, is that you need town meeting approval and you need ballot box approval.
Yes, right.
This very building here probably got pared down at least 15 to 20 million dollars from where it started. And you see some of the effects with the cracks, the structural damages, the, some of the people that were working on this project, we're not going to the lowest bidder, some of the overseeing of this, it was really, it was a nightmare of a project, and people look at this and say, last building you built was this school, and it really didn't, we didn't get what we paid for. So there's a lot of bad taste in the community when it comes to building a new school. It's a, it's a very, very hard sell. And people are all for it at town meeting, but when they go to the, as we all know, when they go to the ballot box, do you get that two-thirds?
I think part of, as I understand, when Justin and the former superintendent went forward, one of the reasons that there was a strong need to do a lot of capital projects in all of the buildings, and the recommendation was to simply write four SOIs, which Justin spent, I'm sure, days and weeks on. I've written only one, and I know how long that takes, and then to prioritize one of the four, which was the middle school. And then that's what brought us to this period. But the eligibility period can be done faster than the 270 days, but I do believe, I think, as the chair has pointed out, the hardest piece of this is the last piece, where you have to really sell it to your town, whatever that's going to look like, that project, and be able to then feel comfortable that you're going to get some support when you go forward, whether it's to fund the feasibility study or, because once you fund the feasibility study, you basically have bought into a project, whatever that is, reno or new. You don't want to spend 500 to 700 or 800,000 and then say, oh, guess what, we're not going to do it.
I apologize if you said this, Dr. Nash. Of the 30, of the 15 old, 15 new-
Yeah.
How many do they choose?
They-
How many are eligible?
They moved, of the 71 that had presented their SOIs as the core program, of which Oxford was one, they narrowed it down to 30. But 15 of those were leftovers from last year that they brought forward, and 15 were new ones that they put in. We were one, obviously, of the new ones they put in this year. So there are 30 right now that they are having those conversations with. And then we'll come back and do either a virtual or a live tour. And then we should hear something, I'd say, maybe March, April, maybe April.
How many do they anticipate selecting?
They, they won't tell you.
They won't tell you.
Yeah. I think it's a matter of what, what the project ends up, the cost, because they're looking at the tobacco sales tax as their monies, their revenues. And then they look at the fact that everything's rolling. They know that this next group, it's another five years. So now they can pay off this group that's in their fifth year, you know, so they know they can do so many per year based on what they've got for money.
That list has been very revolving.
Yeah.
It's not, if you're number, if you were number 10 last year, the following year or the next time it comes out, you, you could have jumped back to number 12. There's a lot, there's a lot of fluidity in that list.
Should you get invited to be part of the eligibility period, but you refuse it, then you have to start all over again and submit an SOI in again, you know. But if you accept it, and then, but there could be some, you know, challenges. They, they might allow you to go more than the 270 days, but they pretty much have this down now. When they first started, you know, they were just working out the details. But the other piece that I would say is, if you're thinking about doing any kind of discussion around reconfiguration of grades, district-wise, that may have an impact on middle school, you also have to think in terms of- middle school, you also have to think in terms of potentially looking at educational programming and bringing in someone who is both an architect and an educational programmer, and lead those conversations, because, you know, you, you want to get whatever is going to be appropriate for students in the 21st century. And certainly, you know, that's the key, if you're going to spend all this money, you know, whatever that looks like, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That is it for me.
Okay. We have our Science Report, Mrs. Griffin, please.
I have a warrant report for the folks for this evening, January 25th, 2021. I signed an accounts payable warrant on January 12th, 2021, for $36,743.87. I signed a food service warrant for, on January 19th, 2021, for $5,088.71. An accounts payable warrant on January 19th, 2021, for $96,167.99. A payroll warrant on January 21st, 2021, for $557,668.75. And an accounts payable warrant, January, dated January 26th, 2021, for $152,605.39.
Just back and through our agenda, looking at what we've accomplished and promised a lot tonight. Back to our Student Representative Report. Has Ashley McGowan made her way here this evening? Virtually? Okay. Ashley, are you out there? You can unmute if you are. Okay. If she does signal that she's available, then we'll jump to her report. If not, I will start with School Committee Members' Request. Mrs. Forbes, you'll be first, Mike, please.
So I don't really have much to say. I just wanted to echo Mrs. Griffin in appreciating and thanking Justin and Dr. Nash, and everybody who's involved in all of this extra work for the betterment of our schools and our students. And also to Mrs. Grenat, appreciation and thanks for what she's been doing, and all the hard work that she and Mrs. Shomer, and certainly the other school nurses as well, have done.
I'll just say ditto to that, and thank you to everybody for all their hard work.
Just two things. Again, I want to encourage parents, community members, to get involved in giving us their feedback, or even volunteering for the search committee. We talk about the superintendent's search, and I want to echo what Mr. Canocchioli had said earlier, that I'd like us to hear a little more about the fall-two season and upcoming school committee meeting, and have some discussion on what that might look like.
I'm all set. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. The same thing, as I mentioned to Amy earlier, for that fall-two season, and the seasons, try and, try and get some normalcy back into athletics, into activities here after school. I think we're hearing the protocols are working, Mrs. Grenat's doing a standing job guiding the district within this. I think we can, we can start making, making things happen. You know, the state's opening up, there are more, there's more hours, there's more things, there's more benefits to get people out there and get it moving. So I am looking for that as well. And, just trying to read here what I'm saying, I think that's all I have right now. Oh, yeah, my time, Mrs. Forbes, you got it?
I just wanted to circle back. I apologize, I should have asked this after Mr. Canocchioli asked about the football, too. The gym, our workout weight room, is that open to students at this point, or no?
No, I don't believe it is.
So, forward-thinking, that is something that the football team starts with prior to practice? So just to have that in the back of our minds.
So, the guidelines for football will be out on the 29th, and I believe there could be some revised guidelines, when I spoke with the Athletic Director today, for indoor track, not sure. Volleyball guidelines may also be revised, but those had come out in the fall. And cheerleading will have been out and are not revised at this point in time. So we'll look at those, and then we tentatively are scheduled to have discussion on all three sports, in this case, not including cheerleading, but indoor track, volleyball, and football with the Board of Health on Monday, because I knew it would be too late if we waited, because there's a two-week window for training and all that that has to happen. They anticipate the season to begin sometime for football, and I believe the other sports, in mid-March. They'll run five games in a six-week period, and as little as I know right now is they're looking at, they were not using fields that are not turf. But that's all to be determined. That's kind of the general piece that I got in talking with the AD on Thursday, I believe it was. So we certainly can come to you on February 8th with, you know, some discussions of where we are at this point in time, you know, what the commitments are from MIAA, and the comfortableness with respect to what we have heard back from the Board of Health, and certainly from our nurses. So, you know, it's, it's a good time to do it, because we'd have to be able to move forward to do that time period. I think the scheduled time period is the week after vacation, if I remember correctly, February 22nd.
Somewhere around there.
Around that. To begin, the season would run the whole length and end somewhere around after April vacation, and then we'd be moving right into, you know, the spring seasons, so, yeah.
Just Forbes, just answer to your point. Under the state regulations right now, bathrooms and weight rooms are closed.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
So to what Dr. Nash was just saying, do we have a meeting after the 5th?
I think we have on February 8th.
February 8th? And then we don't have one after that, though, right? Because of the holiday?
We do, two weeks.
Oh, we do? All right. Because I just didn't know if that's something we want.
That would be too late on the second meeting of the month, I believe.
Right. So that's what I'm saying. So do we have something that we can put on the agenda for the 8th?
We're going to bring the AD.
It's coming anyway?
Yeah. We'll, we'll have him here. By then, we'll have, at least know what the guidelines are. Hopefully, they're out this Friday. Any other revisions to any of the existing guidelines, from what they tell me. We'll have met with the Board of Health. They probably will not have had the guidelines. They're, they only have one meeting scheduled in February. So unfortunately, right now, it was the 1st, so we took it, just to say, here's, you know. And we'll get other information from what's going on. And obviously, Kevin would need to then, if the discussion is that we need to find other fields to play with, I guess, play, have our games, and that would be something that we may not know on the 8th, but we know at least that, yes, we need to go and work those details out.
I, I guess what this committee is saying this evening is to send, is through a superintendent, the principals and the athletic directors, to have a plan prepared to be ready to go for day one.
Yeah, we hope to. That's our goal.
That, we're saying from the school.
That's our goal.
From the school committee, that's also.
Yeah. We just don't, I just don't know of all the details we worked out on the 8th. That's the only thing.
Correct.
You know, we certainly may know a lot of them, but our, our goal would be to be able to get as many of those pieces in place that we're able to, but, yeah. Till I can see it, I don't even know what it is yet, so.
Exactly. That's why, it does take a lot of coordination and planning.
Yeah.
So we start early with that.
We're going to go. Okay. Ashley's here now. All right. Any further, any, I will open the floor. Anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak, please identify yourself, and you can unmute. I don't see any indication. We'll wait another second or so. Any other further business in front of this board? Anyone that attend a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. Second?
So moved in second, all is a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
By five in affirmative, we have adjourned. We'll see you on the 8th.